Morning, everybody. Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the Licensing Subcommittee? Time is ten o'clock. My name is councillor David McFlay, chairman of this committee. Please can I advise all members at the meeting of being video recorded live stream? Addition of video recorder to be uploaded to the council's meeting. Please can I remind anyone virtually to up their cameras and mute their microphones? I also remind members... And we'll always be cur... Um... Members of all... Any interest? I will move on to the agenda. Application for premises licence Pump House Garnier Road, 020. Ye. Ah, good enough. Um, report number LR559. I'll go to the next sheet. Chairman's guidance: The chairman will set out the procedure for the followed to be followed in the hearing. Firstly, welcome again to the meeting of the Licensing Subcommittee. Hearings' regulation require that the hearings should take the form of a discussion led by the Subcommittee. That cross-examination will not normally be allowed. You will be following the adopted procedure for these hearings, which is set out on the reverse of the agenda paper, which is on here. Each party will be allowed equal maximum time to exercise their rights at the hearing. I will exercise my discretion to allow additional time if necessary, taking into account the requirement to allow all parties equal maximum time. Only those points contained in the written representations, the report and the supplementary documents can be raised. No new evidence can be considered, except with the agreement of all parties. Very quickly, before I go on, is everybody warm enough? Because I've had the doors open because of Covid, but if anybody's getting cold, say so. No, you're all fine, okay. All happy, David? They're all happy with the doors open? That's any of the bells. Bells! Right, ensure the applicant is seated at the table. Other responsible authorities, police, et cetera, if here, will normally be seated at the table, but they're not. Premises, licence holder, if in attendance, should all be invited to sit at the table. Any other persons will normally remain in the public gallery and come up to the table. Subcommittee is made of councillor Weston, councillor Green, experienced councillors, we've sat before, so we hope we can look after you well. If the officers and representatives around the table would now please introduce themselves.
Ethan Mountney, S Lister.
Thank you.
Kirby Cannon, minising the meeting.
Move on to the next one. Subcommittee has read all the written comments of the application which were included in the report. I understand that the following persons wish to address the Subcommittee. We have councillor Chris Edwards from the City Council, Anna Simmons, Dr A Crawford on behalf of himself, Mansell Clark, Carol Wade and Marcus Swellwell, Colin Armstrong on behalf of himself and Nicholas Tudor, Janet Roland White, Simon Lomas on behalf of himself and Jane Nicholson. Right, we can only consider issues relating to the four licensing objectives: Prevention of crime and disorder, Public safety, Prevention of public nuisance and protection of children. Subcommittee will also have regard to the national guidance and the council's licensing policy. Could now go on, please, Brian, if you could introduce the report.
Thank you, Chair. This is an application for the grant of a premises licence, section seventeen of the Act. The premises is the Pump House on Garnier Road. Well, the application proposes the supply of alcohol. And of... An application can be... Seventeen of... No representations have been... Although conditions were agreed between the applicant and the Hampshire... And I've reflected those in section five of the report, which is pages fourteen to sixteen, and you'll see those in... Representations have been received from twenty-seven other persons, of which are against the application. The representations are set out in appendix two of the report, pages thirty-seven to... These representations broadly relate to all four of the licensing objectives, but... Members are reminded that they may only take... ...to the four licensing objectives. And can I also remind members that any other persons who have made representations, they're the only people who... And that those individuals may only refer to matters already raised in their representation, so no new evidence. If the Subcommittee were minded to grant the application, there are conditions set out in page five that are based on those... Taken from the rating scale of the application. And obviously, you may reword these as you feel appropriate. Welcome any questions that you...
Thank you, Brian. Do you have any questions? What at this moment? The applicant may now address the Subcommittee.
There, Alex from the Pump House, Windsor. I'm the director. But I've just, I like... We're hoping to do licensing. So, Pump House is a co-working... Sorry. The Pump House is a co-working member space with a cafe. We provide a space for work, for work from homeless, to be able to work in a relaxed, calm, inspiring building alongside, alongside other like-minded people. They have the benefit of large co-working areas, individual Zoom rooms, meeting rooms, health and wellbeing spaces where there's regular yoga classes and such like. We wish to be able to offer members and guests the pleasure of having something like a glass of wine in the afternoon with their lunch or after work, to be able to unwind, rest with after the rigors of a hard day at work. Part of the experience that we have created is the opportunity to socialise with other members and to be able to bring a client or a friend into the building to meet them, enabling them to have the choice to be able to purchase a glass of wine instead of bringing their own. Make for a much classier environment, we believe. With regards to the four licensing objectives... The first one. Okay, so yeah, talk through prevention of crime and disorder and what we're going to do to sort of minimise the impact on there. Installation of security cameras, monitor CCTV that will be recorded, which is also one thing that the police insisted that we had. The prohibiting of sale of alcohol to those that are expected of being intoxicated. No sale of alcohol to those that are under eighteen, using the challenge twenty-five directive as well, to again, to ensure that we are serving the right age people. Alarm system on building, which actually is already there. Come members of shop watch, probably pub watch as well. Staff training. Public safety, monitored CCTV again, challenge twenty-five again. Refuse the sale of alcohol to anyone that looks and appears intoxicated. Clear fire exit signage throughout the building. Availability of appropriate fire extinguishers too, which we've put in place. The prevention of public nuisance. No supply of alcohol to anyone under the age of eighteen. Constant supervision of alcohol sales area. Clear all glass, especially breakage immediately. We will be displaying signage about our challenge twenty-five policy throughout the building. Clear signage at that exists... Sorry. And respect local residents. And again, I think monitor CCTV comes under that as well. Protection of children from harm, monitor CCTV again. Responsible adult must accompany any children that attend site. No sale of anyone under the age of eighteen. And just being part of shop watch and pub watch will also help us with this as well. As I said at the beginning, you know, I think Bryony also said, is that we have been given some conditions. I think police were the only ones that actually put those conditions in place and we've responded and accepted all the changes. Some of those were time-related. CCTV was certainly another one. So we're happy with that and we're happy to adhere to what they, what they've requested. That's it.
Thank you. Members, do you have any questions? Thank you. You talked about the members reading the application as well. Talk about public in the same context.
Yeah, absolutely. So our members... So I'm trying to think, so the public side of things, we, obviously there will be members of the public that are not members, that come into the building, so as sort of mentioned, they'll have guests. So whether that's clients or family or, you know, whatever, they, they have the ability to come into the building. Externally, we do have a couple of pop-up food operators that come to site. Again, we would like to be able to, with a licence, provide alcohol to people that are eating on those days as well. But yeah, so that, that's, the, the main focus of the building is member-related and it will be their guests inside the building.
Can you explain to me what you mean by a member? Is it some, like a club?
So our members are there for co-working. So instead of working from home, they use our place as a means to be able to get out of the house and be able to work from somewhere else. So our members are workers, business people, directors, people that work for companies that are having their membership paid for by their companies. Yeah, so not, it's not a members' club as such. It is, we call them members, but actually it's a co-working model.
Thank you, Derek. I have a couple of questions if I may. With a recurring theme through that has objection about takeaway pizzas going out into the meadows and you just confirmed that, I think, by saying pop-up shops. Can you define, please, for me and the committee, what a pop-up shop is?
Yeah, so a pop-up food operator is someone that's not usually there. They are not on-site all the time. So at the moment, we have on Wednesdays a burger van that comes along on a temporary basis from four PM to eight PM. And, you know, if you come along, all you see there is mostly families that come along, local families as well. And then on Saturday, although this weekend it's not happening, we have a pizza pop-up. So they come along and again, it's four to eight. So we always agree that we didn't want anything to be there any longer than that. We didn't want it to go on until ten o'clock at night. We wanted eight PM to be the cutoff. So, because again, public nuisance, we didn't want to cause too much of an issue.
If I could follow up. Again, a recurring theme through that is objection was littering. So, so how do you propose to block littering? Stop it completely, stop just does not, sorry, litter?
Um, we have a lot of bins there. You know, kind of think, uh, how, what am I? I can't guarantee it, like, you know, it's a takeaway pop-up. There's a chance that someone's going to take the pizza away with them. What they do there afterwards, most people that do that tend to bring a car, so we assume that they're going home. If they sit on-site, of which most of them do, actually, we have lots and lots of bins around the site that should easily be able to dispose of it and we have staff that monitor it too, that are outside in the environment. So it's not like we just leave it to self-monitor. Like, we actually monitor it, like, we are outside making sure that things are cleared and that's on our site. So I can't, you know, I can't guarantee that on a summer's day that someone takes it to cathedral grounds and leaves it there. I don't, I can't do that, but I can give you as much reassurance as possible, Matt, is that we've got lots of bins, we have it monitored and the vast majority of people that take away tend to drive, so they will take it with them home.
Thank you.
Chair, could I just clarify, regarding the food. So in relation to the provision of food that the applicants have described, it's not actually licensable. So if you were minded to grant the application and we're looking at perhaps conditions around litter management, those conditions would not be... So the provision of food would, would only be licensed well after eleven PM. And I believe the applicant's clarified that it does stop. And so for purposes of a premises licence application, that the food, I'm afraid, is irrelevant.
It's not either or, it's just irrelevant. Yeah, thank you. Let's move through responsible authorities. Well, no environmental health, no police, no fire service, protection, local planning authority, don't... Just ask the licensing authority. Right, any other person who has made relevant representation then will be allowed to present their representation. The Subcommittee may ask them questions and subject to the permission of the Subcommittee, the applicant or representative may ask them questions. If I now go to my, uh, list. First speaker we have is councillor Chris Edwards. Chris, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm talking this morning on behalf of the many residents who've spoken to me as one of their ward councillors, both last year when proposals were made and recently. I'd concentrate on two matters. The first is public safety. So I'd like to draw your attention to the specific location of the Pump House on Garnier Road. This is essentially a country lane, which has been engineered in modern times to cope with the significant and rising volume of traffic. Pump House is between two road narrowings, each on a blind curve, just one hundred metres of it. There are no traffic control. It's a tricky road to navigate, seen several near misses and I will confess to having had one or two myself. Furthermore, there is no pavement on Pump House side, so that any customer leaving the Pump House immediately finds themselves this narrow and congested carriageway. Safety grounds, I would suggest this is not a good place. My second point concerns prevention of public nuisance. It's relevant that the Pump House is right on the edge of the South Downs National Park. Immediate neighbour Meadow View is at the park's most westerly part. It's also right next to a site of importance for nature conservation and a site of special scientific interest, an area in which local volunteers have come a lot recently to store. It is because these outstanding green spaces are right up against Winchester's furthest suburban end that their tranquility is so important. The habitual enjoyment of this peaceful landscape, not just by local residents, but by visitors from across the city and beyond, as I would contend, set a precedent in the public mind. This context, premises and off-premises licence until twenty-three hundred likely be a source of intrusive public nuisance. I think finally, this is an unusual case because the Pump House is on this border between the National Park and the city suburb. Borders are often difficult places and I'm sure you will give it careful and sensitive treatment.
Thank you to councillor. One, if I may. You mentioned in your presentation about the pinch points either side, traffic calming measures. I believe so. Having driven the road many times, it does slow you down.
It slows some people down.
But if they're going to drive into somebody else, it's either that or slow down, so.
Yes, but it encourages other people to accelerate in order to try and get round and... ...coming traffic. It, I accept it can be argued either way, but my personal, my personal experience is that it's a tricky place.
I agree with you. I've driven in, when I come into Winchester, it's one of the roads I use and it is tricky. I think we've just got to view it realistically for us to debate later. Thank you very much, Chris. Next, could we please have Hannah Simmons? Thank you, Hannah.
Right, hear me here. Okay, my name's Hannah. My house is Meadow View. My house in Meadow View and the Pump House are set in the unique site out on the outskirts of... The delicate ecosystem with the water meadows on one side and the chalk streams of the Iton Valley behind and then the busy rap run that we just heard about of Garnier Road in front. The Pump House is less than three metres from my boundary. Historically, in Victorian times, Pump House superintendent would have lived at Meadow View in my house, hence the close proximity. The site is shared with Southern Water and is a working waterworks with access by Southern Water, often in response to flooding or when there is heavy rain. Large lorries pumping sewage need twenty-four hour access to the back of the Pump House and increases in members of the public consuming alcohol by safety and functioning of the site. Whilst the restoration and the presentation of the Pump House by the applicants has been tasteful and slowly developed over the past few months, I have huge concerns over their ambitious ideas and the slow creep of business ventures. We have attempted to reach compromises with them in order to mitigate our worries with little effect. The worry, noise and impact on our property thus far has been horrible. Initially, planning for the building was offices in line with modern practices. Since then, we have seen takeaway coffee, cafe, daily breakfast and lunch indoor catering and evening events. Just last Saturday, a party was held late into the night. Both music and noise from outdoor guests could be heard in our garden and our kitchen. Light pollution from evening events like this is also an issue. Evening events have become a regular thing, Wednesday night with the burger van and Saturday night with the pizza van. Both events, our advertisers bring your own bottle, so we're already experiencing alcohol on the site. With these events, guests congregate on the pavement opposite and access the Pump House by the road and not the pavement. It should be noted, and I will be repeating what Edwards has said, that Garnier Road already has four separate traffic calming measures to cope with the traffic from the motorway and those cutting across town. Already a road with the need to mitigate heavy flow of traffic and the speed limit changes from sixty to thirty at the pinch point outside the Pump House vehicular entrance, which further adds to congestion. Shortly after this point, pedestrians are crossing to access the pedestrian gate to the Pump House. There are many factors to navigate here to ensure the public can access the site safely. The increased opening hours and the sale of alcohol, public safety will definitely be impacted, especially in the evening on this poorly lit road. I consider alcohol to this ever-changing venue to present an invasion of privacy due to the public nuisance it will cause in extra noise, traffic and footfall. Every weekend so far, personally to me, there has been some incidents of the Pump House users walking on my drive, turning in my drive, using my bin for Pump House rubbish, delivering that, delivery vans reversing in my drive, even reversing into my gatepost, those arriving in cars blocking my entrance. This is what the Pump House users do when they are sober. What will they do under the influence of alcohol? The hours requested by the applicant will significantly impact me personally, especially late into the evening on Friday and Saturday night. Usage of the building in this way is a significant change from the quiet comings and goings of the users of this rural setting. For fourteen years I have lived on Garnier Road, I have witnessed accidents on either side of the Pump House, incidents of drunken behaviour and antisocial or threatening behaviour, especially at night. Yesterday, the ninth of April, a motorcycle rear-ended a car outside the Pump House as pedestrians crossed the road to the venue. We have also seen cyclists riding the wrong way along the road to access the pedestrian gate at the Pump House. Jack Hendy, Assistant Transport Planner for Hampshire Highways, has confirmed to us that Winchester Council did not seek to consult with them when planning was granted, the lift a condition which explicitly was to restrict the use of the premises in the interest of highway safety and local amenity. So it's been highlighted that there already are issues with this road. And as homeowners in the main, because we love where we live, we have chosen not to report every incident, but I really wish we had now. I wish I'd been one of those people who recorded events and contacted the police to reflect the road incidents regarding safety and the public nuisance incidents that have already existed with use exiting the town on the river path, travelling to and from Palmer's Field at the other end of Garnier Road, often for drink-filled gatherings. Alcohol in this setting is already quite a worry. To summarise, I object to the sale of and consumption of alcohol at the Pump House due to the proximity to my house and the lack of trust, unfortunately, we have in the applicants who have said they are applying for flexibility, which in all likelihood will mean longer, louder events and longer opening hours. They always seem to be pushing for the maximum. I wish to object to the precedent this licence will also set for the future. It opens the floodgates to a host of future entertainment ventures, which are totally inappropriate to the area and not in line with offices of modern working practices. The latest reincarnation of the Pump House as an independent upmarket co-working cafe will bring invasive noise and traffic affecting no directly, which alcohol only exacerbate. I think it's also unnecessary and inappropriate for workers at the office to be drinking alcohol until eight PM and ten PM in the evening. I don't believe it's justified. And getting this decision right is vital and what we agreed today, or you agree and think about, is going to set a precedent going forward, which I think will change that area forever. And I would just like to make another point that whilst the applicant has talked about members drinking inside for their downtime after work, it's the public outside making noise, which can only be exacerbated by alcohol, which is a huge concern, along with the danger of the road. So I, I differ really on your point about members needing to drink inside because I feel really it's the public and the comings and goings that is a real... Thank you.
Thank you. If I may have just clarified something with Bryony. Bring your own bottle.
It doesn't require a licence. If, if you minded to refuse the application today, that could legally...
Thank you. Um, can you tell me what sort of mediation you've had with the applicant?
We've had several meetings with them on our drive and at the Pump House. We've had a tour of the Pump House several times. We've sat down to talk, offer of coffee. It's all been quite friendly. We've had promises of the things that were going to be put in place and to be honest, none of that's really happened. We've discussed a fence that might be put up to the side to stop people walking directly along a path that isn't necessarily the way to the cafe area, but people, it's already there, people see it. People see it, and that leads them onto my drive basically and my bin. And we talked about putting a fence up, but that hasn't happened. There are two gates to the entrance that look like entrances to the Pump House. One is for Southern Water and Eco kitchens, which are at the back of the property, and one is for Pump House. And that isn't particularly clear or hasn't been particularly clear to the public, and so they've attempted to use quite a few different approaches, including mine. We've gotten, we've discussed cooking smells, those kind of things, whether they would shut their window, whether they are allowed to have a fan setting these smells into my garden. Those are the kind of conversations we've been having. We haven't really got anywhere with those. I know that's not related to alcohol, but these are the things we've been trying to mitigate.
The other one is going to say, can you just clarify, did you say Pump House is three metres away from your house? Or do you mean from your boundary?
From my boundary, but my garden runs the length of the river there, which is completely adjacent to the site, the whole site. So the building itself is three metres from my drive, but our garden is the length of that site. So that's where all the noise comes from. It's just come straight over. And the water meadows is a really unusual sort of structure in that it's like a valley with St Catherine's Hill on the side. It just echoes whatever's going on. You hear it all.
Very well.
Thank you.
Next, if I could have Dr A. Crawford, please, who's speaking on behalf of himself. Mansell Clark, Carrollway, Marcus Swellwell.
Good morning, Mr Chairman and members of the committee. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. My name is Dr Anthony Crawford. My wife and I live on the corner of Garnier Road and Kingsgate Road, 200 yards from them on our side. We strongly object to the application on grounds of public safety, damage to public amenity and biodiversity and nuisance. Talk about public safety, which the council has already alluded to, and some of this will be repetition, but it does reinforce the point. Hampshire Highways have not reversed their previous constraint made several years ago that the site should be for office use only, restricts the flow of vehicles and pedestrians in Garnier Road. There was good reason for this. The road is dangerous. It is very busy. There's a popular route for walkers going to the water meadows. Families often stepping into the road off the narrow pavement. There are many cyclists, often families. I see families of cyclists with small children on tiny little bicycles weaving in and trying to negotiate the traffic, particularly at weekends. There are of course many cars, as has been alluded to, using this as an alternative route, and this will get worse in the future, in the near future, when the works start on the M3 and they will round about when more people start to look for an alternative route away from those traffic issues. There are lorries, tractors and at weekends, posses and motorcycles using this road. Point I'm making is to reinforce the point that the road is already very busy and dangerous. As we have heard, Pump House site lies between two narrow chicanes, both on blind corners, approximately 160 yards apart, lights of way poorly understood by many drivers, leading to impatience, unpleasant altercations and accidents. Drivers have a lot to cope with here. Driving through the east chicane, they have to negotiate the corner and the narrow space between opposing traffic and the railings. Pedestrians, there are now, we now have pedestrians adding to this traffic difficulty, entering or leaving the pub house, the Pump House, and they do not, as we have heard, have a safe haven pavement to protect them. And they are already using the pavement less south side to walk into the even more dangerous west chicane, where they will be invisible in darkness. Granting an alcohol licence will increase the number of pedestrians and drivers leaving the site, possibly paying less attention to traffic after drinking alcohol, increasing the danger to themselves and other road users in Garnier Road. Hampshire Highways should be consulted about adding the risk of alcohol to this already dangerous road. Now talk about public amenity. Pump House lies adjacent to the famous Keats Walk, named after Keats, who walked from Winchester Cathedral to St Cross Hospital, 1819. So taken by its natural beauty that he wrote the famous poem to Water. Tourists from all over the world like to walk on this trail to share the beauty that so inspired Keats. We as residents, Winchester at this time, are custodians of this heritage, and it is totally inappropriate to have off-sales of alcohol on the walk, where walkers may encounter drinkers on the meadows. Most people will of course be responsible, but there will be those who will take the opportunity to congregate in the meadows, often late into the night with off-sales proposed until 11pm on Fridays and Saturdays. Litter left behind will spoil this tranquil area, will also be a threat to the biodiversity, especially if thrown into the river, where there are otters, eels, trout, eaglets, kingfishers, moor hens and so on, to name but a few, as well as several rare species of bats that live under the... Now, that nuisance which we've heard a lot about from Hannah, loud voices in the outdoor seating area in car park already disturb the residents of Meadowview next door. Off-sale alcohol up to 11pm at weekends will increase noise and antisocial behaviour in the meadows in Garnier Road. We already put up with litter thrown into our gardens and noise late at night from people going backwards and forwards down Garnier Road to get home, and we fear this will be much worse if the licence is granted. We urge the committee not to approve this licence, particularly on the issue of public safety and traffic problems. And as has been alluded to by Hannah, we are worried about what may happen in the future with more, with returning the site into less of a café, restaurant, into more of a public house and alcohol sales. That's the end of my submission. I'd like now to talk on behalf of the other two objectors. If it's appropriate to do that now, or do you want to question me on what I've said?
I think councillor Green has a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I think actually I might have found my answer. You're saying that they want to stay open till 11 o'clock at night?
Well, they may close, the off-sales licence is to 11 o'clock at night on Fridays and Saturdays. I think that's correct. Then, well, okay, 10.
10 o'clock.
I'm told it's going to be 10. First one. Okay, I'll talk about...
Another question for you.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Bryony, I have a question. Do you clarify the points made about Hampshire Highways?
So other persons have raised the matter that Hampshire Highways put in planning consent for the... in relation to... I'm not a planning officer, and as we know, this is a process to planning. A licence can be granted for a premises where planning permission is required and vice versa. So Hampshire Highways are not consulted licensing applications. They're not a responsible authority. We consult the authority, and they are expected to deliberate safety matters, and where they feel that it is beyond their understanding, or they have concerns that they'd be affected by someone who knows a bit more than them, they would then refer that to Hampshire. As you can see from the paper, representing... Or am I aware that the police may be hurt or because of the... And I believe what that really comes down to, and there is guidance on this in the Licensing Act, is that public safety, remit of public safety, promotion of the public licensing objective really is restricted to premises itself and maybe the curtilage of the premises. So it is up to you as a committee to determine what you think is reasonably necessary the applicants do in respect of the public safety raised. We wouldn't, for example, expect the road to be redone or made safer, but you may reasonably consider other measures in place that would promote...
I may have a question for you as well.
Of course.
To Crawford. It's horrible sitting there, isn't it? We keep chucking questions at you. You mentioned, and so does Hannah, alcohol, an awful lot. Have you many instances to date of drunken behaviour at the site?
No, I haven't.
Right, thank you.
Because I live some...
Oh no, you're commenting on alcohol, so it is reasonable for me to ask you the question. Have you seen any examples of...
No, of course.
Thank you.
My point about the alcohol was that people leaving the site having had alcohol or going on to the meadows having had alcohol due to...
Have you heard any of that? Because you live fairly close.
I live a little bit too far away to hear a lot of that at the moment. Alcohol sales are going to increase. Alcohol's going to increase. It may well become an issue.
But it's not at the moment.
I mean, I'm trying not to talk about necessarily myself, although I will be affected by people walking down the road past, leaving the site, but also on behalf of other people and other residents.
Because one of the issues we have is that as a committee, if alcohol becomes abused and people do become very noisy, they can be referred back to this committee. Therefore, thank you.
Can I now just read the representations from the other people? Marcus Swellwell, who is unfortunately unable to be here today. Some of this is repetition, but he wants to be represented, so I will read it out. "I propose that no approval is given until Hampshire Highways are consulted by your committee on the matter of Garnier Road's safety and the use of alcohol on the pump site. Two, I also urge that the committee find some way to control existing alcohol use on the site and prevent the 'bring your own bottle' tactic being used by the Pump House to flout the licensing process. Pump House charges £10 corkage per bottle of wine and proportionate for a bottle of beer to their clients, making profitable alcohol use in this grossly unsuitable place." Also says his last point is, "off-sale alcohol drinkers will inevitably spread into the water meadows, site of special scientific interest. Keats Walk and residential Claudentum fen, site of importance to nature conservation. Claudentum fen provides many hiding and escape places and has been used for drug-taking distribution. Littering this biodiversity conservation area is already a problem." I think he lives in a much closer area to affected by this than I am. Other persons that I'm representing are Harold and Mansell Clark, who live in Prior's Barton. Way. They make similar points, but I'll read them out. One, "the safety of the road when walkers are leaving the site. In 2000, the Highways Authority said the building should be for office use only if the chicanes make the road too dangerous. No pavement on the exit side of the Pump House, which means that anyone leaving the site has to cross the road where the sightline is already poor, as is the lighting. Two, the noise levels in a quiet area known as Keats Walk, which is a tranquil, peaceful countryside setting, will not only disturb local neighbours, but also the abundance of wildlife in the woods adjacent to the property, several species of owls and bats living there. Three, we have deep concerns that the licence will encourage antisocial behaviour and lead additional members of the public into the adjacent woods of the fen, where local young children play in an area particularly set aside for them. This area of town is not well policed, which renders it particularly vulnerable." Any questions about those?
As you yourself said, it's a lot of repetition. Committee has read all the papers.
No, I understand that, but it reinforces the point.
But we have... Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, there will be some repetition of what has been said before, but then that just reinforces the importance of the points that are being made. I'll just make three points for myself, which elaborate on my objection letter. First one, as the committee is aware, it's a legal requirement under the Licensing Act. License should only be granted if it promotes the licensing objectives, which is public safety. I've also heard a lot about how dangerous this road is, particularly at the premises. Highways Authority has assessed the road, decided that it was not suitable. Meteor premises particularly and on the record specifically because of public safety and road safety. Do not think is appropriate to disregard that. That's critical. And on that ground, safety would be detrimentally affected by granting an alcohol licence to these premises. They're not suitable as non-alcohol. Meteor premises, they certainly aren't suitable. These are selling alcohol late into the evening and in the dark. Second point is related to Winchester's licensing policy. That requires that the applicant includes in their application an operating schedule, which they have done. That operating schedule needs to include a suitable risk assessment. It's clear that the applicant has conducted some risk assessment of some areas, but it's notable that no mention whatsoever is made of road safety or the impact on their customers having consumed alcohol and leaving the premises on this dangerous stretch of road. Now, it's not necessarily surprising that they failed to include any risk assessments. They've had plenty of time to do so. They know about the issue. Had discussions. I've personally had discussions with them about it. And that they're very well aware of the dangers. They're obvious, and they've been reiterated many times in the previous objections and in the current objections. It's perhaps not surprising that they haven't done this, because it's obvious that that risk assessment would have failed. Hampshire Highways have already risk assessed the area and concluded it's too dangerous for a lesser type of operation, never mind alcohol. Though no risk assessment has been included in the operating schedule, hasn't been conducted beforehand. I just asked the question why the applicant would not do that. It's an obvious risk, an obvious problem they should address. They can't, because it's not possible to address it, make this place safe, particularly if an alcohol licence was granted. I think on that ground, it would be inconceivable that a risk assessment could be carried out, which would promote public safety as is required. I think that's a fatal, it's fatal to the application, in my view. The third point I'd like to make is more anecdotal, made by other people. I travel on foot and by car along Garnier Road. Often, I know very well, I only live 200 metres away. Personally, since the premises have been opened, I've had two near-missies of people walking out of the premises straight onto the road in front of me. And I'm more aware than most people about the risk having been through this process, considering it. That was during the day, night, or when the customers had consumed alcohol. I don't know what the consequences could have been, or if it was a driver who wasn't more acutely aware of the dangers. I think on that ground, public safety would not be promoted by granting this licence. I've also, and this is just related to that one, I've also witnessed on a number of occasions customers exiting premises and actually having to stop traffic in order to cross the road, because they could not do so safely. That's during the day, and they haven't consumed alcohol ever since. And if it was at night, with the extended licensing hours that they are seeking, or if they'd consumed alcohol, again, consequences could be very different. So on those grounds, I would suggest that this licence should be refused, and the duty of the committee is to refuse the licence. So on behalf of myself, could I just pause?
Yes, sorry. Fine, before you do.
Please.
Risk assessment and the highways element to this. Because I think you've already said that that is not for this committee to.
Well, the highways terms that have been raised previously, and I couldn't say what year they were raised either because, like I say, I'm not a planning officer and I haven't had sight of the planning premises. They're relevant to the, not relevant to the licensing process. And the reason I say that, like I said previously to Captain Westwood, is that licensing and planning are separate places. And you can apply for planning consent for a building that is not permitted to use it. And you can apply for a licence for a building that is not permitted to use it. Run alongside each other. You need to have one in place to inform each other. And as I've previously said as well, but you know, there's, there's the level of responsibility premises licence holder, the public safety beyond the licensable area is certain. Is it the responsibility of a premises licence holder, a customer's road, be that in a rural pub or a city centre?
May I respond to that?
Want to decide something?
Yeah. We keep hearing about dangerous entrance to these premises. Back in my younger days, a very long time ago, I used to know it as it was, the sewerworks. Now, when I was young, there always used to be two entrances, well, two, one entrance, one exit. Is that not the case now? Is it just one entrance and exit?
So we have the right to use both. We have the right to use both. But at the moment, in order not to affect our neighbours as much, we do, we don't use that end. But the site is obviously owned by Winchester College, who is our landlord. So we do have the right to use both.
May I comment on that?
You may do.
I remember it when it was the sewers works as well and the refuse recycling centre. The important difference there is that vast majority of people that attended that site came by car. And although it caused a lot of congestion, in a way that made it safer, stopped the traffic. There were practically no people across that road by foot to reach the site. And so the issue about pedestrians leaving the site straight into the road and being hit by cars just didn't arise. Difference that I would comment on.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to then run on to your representation.
Do you mind if I comment on Bryony's point? Because I think it's important. I think it's slightly not, you're not being misleading, but I think the point could be misleading. I'm not saying you're being misleading, but I think the point could be misunderstood. And that is.
Bryony, would you like to clarify fully? Make it understandable? And then if you were at the end of that agreed, whether you understand it or not?
I think, I think the only point I've made, Chair, is that planning and licensing don't necessarily import. And that, you know, if road safety concerns were to be raised on this application, haven't been. I'm not saying that that doesn't mean there aren't road safety concerns. But I think the, like I say, it's up for the, it's for the committee to decide what level of responsibility premises licence holder has to have with regards to road safety.
Can we move on? Oh, sorry. Do you accept what Brian has just said to you?
I, I, I understand what's been said.
Right, thank you.
The risk in relation to the road is self-evident. And the fact that Hampshire Highways has recognised that should not be ignored. I don't think it's relevant that it's a planning versus licensing issue. It's still relevant to this.
Captain Westwood had a question. Can I just ask the same question that we all? Which is a lot about safety and alcohol. As they got in place at the moment. Have you noticed and seen evidence of behaviour influenced by alcohol?
No, I haven't, no.
It's very simply the issue in relation to public safety. Within that, you're looking at what, it covers things like.
Can I just say, it includes the exit from the premises and the safety of their customers. So the risk assessment needs to include the safety of the customers as they exit the premises.
Thank you.
So I've been asked to represent Mr Tudor, and he has three points that he'd like me to raise. First is that no approval should be given until Hampshire Highways has been consulted by the committee in relation to Garnier Wood's safety and that they've approved the use of alcohol on the pump house site. He would also like to urge the committee to find some way to control the existing use of bring your own bottle, which is at £10 corkage per bottle. Clearly a business related to alcohol, which is using a loophole in the law, which they may well be entitled to legally, but impacting the safety of the sites, the local community. The last point that he'd like to make, which has been made by others, is that the off-sale alcohol drinkers will inevitably spread into the water meadows in Keats Walk and residential areas, including the Fen, sites of environmental importance. Many hiding places and escape places for people who used to commit crimes or behave in an inappropriate way for the location. And he's concerned about littering in a bi environmentally sensitive conservation.
Kevin, if I may. Captain Green has a question.
I think we've already established several times this morning that bringing the bottle got nothing actually to do with this licensing committee. We cannot control them bringing bottles into the site. It's not a licensable thing. So keep bringing it up and it's, I'm sorry, but it's not going to make any difference. If we say no to this licence, they can still bring the bottles in. There's absolutely nothing this licensing authority can do about it. So it's, you know, if you could not keep bringing it up.
No, I agree. That's, that's not my point. It's a legitimate point for residents to raise. However, I accept it's not a point for this licensing committee.
And I think, if I may, you know, we did at the start, we had read the report. All we're getting is the vote and reading of the report. So if there are expanded, that I think is fantastic. But, you know, this committee has shown the respect of reading the report. And we've taken our legal advice. Janet Rowland Wright. I beg your pardon, White.
I mean, I live in Clawsentham Road, opposite the Fen. Meadow View, not far from the pump house. And you've read my objection. Again, everybody else is talking about the safety of pedestrians in Garnier. The public nuisance. Over the years, I've called the police out at night several times. Sometimes they've been out, sometimes they don't bother. Because Clawsentham Fen historically has had an area of public nuisance attached to it, if you like, because young people especially use it. There are needles found, litter, bottles, cans. Pump house, obviously. Can't see that this is going to diminish in any way if the pump house is granted an alcohol licence. It's just totally inappropriate thing to do.
Thank you so much for your brevity. Captain Green. Can I, can I ask? Kevin, when I was younger, it always used to be used, the meadows or university, that used to be their hideout with their alcohol. Is that still the case these days?
I don't think it's university students, no. It's drug dealers who deal there as well. It's people who perhaps rather not have in the Fen. I mean, the Fen is an area of outstanding interest. It's a beautiful area. There are deer. They weren't mentioned when the animals were run through. Stunning, stunning. And anything that impacts on that litter wise, people being there, creating whatever noise they like, which, as I've said, happens regularly anyway. And the police, they're very rarely, they're not there. It's not a policed area, which is what's already been mentioned in the reports.
Thank you very much, Philip. Simon Lomus, please, on behalf of himself and Jane Nicholson. If possibly we could, the points that we've heard from three or four people, if they could just be, in a slightly brief way, thank you.
Can you hear me even better? Great stuff. So I am also owner of Meadow View with Hannah. So, but I'm relying on Hannah's view for the representation of Meadow View. For brevity, so hopefully in keeping concise. I'd like to just add a couple of points around being the owner of Meadow View and living in Meadow View, which I think are relevant. We've talked a lot within these sessions around upmarket co-working environments, and that sounds very nice. I think it is disingenuous to the licensing that's been applied for. They're applying for licensing on Friday night till 10 o'clock, on Saturday night till 10, 10 o'clock. Then from a work, upmarket working environment, I don't believe it's consistent or appropriate to have a upmarket work environment where you're drinking till 10 o'clock. It's inconsistent. That doesn't, as in, I don't know how other people work, but where I work, we don't work and drink till 10 o'clock on a Saturday night. That's not how we tend to work. So I think the planning, sorry, the licensing application is extremely inconsistent with the words we use around upmarket co-working, which sounds very pleasant and very uncontentious. Whereas the licensing, I think, is significantly different and allows a significantly different usage. The other point that you've asked a lot of the other objectives around is around what it's like experiencing, have we seen issues already with alcohol use? Which is a fair question. I think you made the point that bringing, bringing your own bottle probably isn't representative of how the licensing will be used. As in charging £10 corkage probably means that you're not going to get a huge amount of people drinking when they could drink somewhere else. I don't think we see, we've experienced what it will be like. But what we have experienced is already we've, we've experienced one event where they did a late night, evening event, which probably was, say, more consistent to what the licensing is trying, trying, trying to achieve. With that, we had music, loud music playing throughout the area. And we had a significant amount of footfall both, on both sides of the road in the evening, because it spills out in, on, on, on to the road. So the limited experience we have has already shown us once that the noise nuisance is significant, really significant. We are sitting, you know, we live next door and we had to, it was Saturday evening. So if you remember Saturday evening, it was quite a hot day. We sat there with all our windows and doors jammed closed, trying to not listen to their music late into the evening. So it totally changed the culture. But I think we haven't got representation of what it may be because the bring your own bottle, I don't think is. But we've got one experience of what it's like as a late night event. And it's pretty offensive to live, to live next to it. We've lived there for 14 years. It's been a quiet, peaceful area. I know you've obviously experienced it some time as well. It's changed it dramatically. That's quite sad for the region.
Okay, can I just quickly, you may have some questions. But clarify late night and late night events, sorry.
That's happened already, the one, the one. Yeah, so the one was into the evening. So it started at eight and went into the evening, you know, gone 10. So, yeah, it, well, I wasn't tracking, as I said, genuinely. We, it was quite, do you know what? It was quite upsetting. So we closed the windows, closed the doors and kind of just tried to avoid it because it's pretty upsetting. Because at nine o'clock and 10 o'clock, when we're standing on our drive, no, when we're sitting in our lounge, listening to their music, it was pretty sad. So I, I, so as Moa said, we wish we'd captured all the evidence of everything that's happened. Unfortunately, it's quite emotional living next to it. So we kind of just shut down and said, look, this is upsetting, let's not.
Thank you. If I may, I'll ask a question. We had a recent application. Yeah, Foodies, certainly. And limits were put on the volume of sound. Something that.
So this application isn't for provision of regulated entertainment. Being on the application that there is no request for live music. That said, there is a deregulation under the Live Music Act, which allow the premises licence holder to play recorded and or live music between 8am and 7pm without it being on their premises licence. So that's deregulated and you can't actually attach conditions to it. The only way that conditions could be attached were if the licence were granted and there were reports of noise nuisance. The premises licence could then be called back in for review and you could re-regulate that provision of music.
That's what we said at Foodies, wasn't it? It was called back in from the original application.
That's right, absolutely. Yeah, so it's between 8am and 11pm. On any premises that supplies alcohol for consumption on those premises, you can have music without it needing to be on licence. But as I say, if you have concerns after the licence has been granted, if other persons or residents had concerns, I mean, anyone can call a premises licence in view and request that that is re-regulated and conditioned.
So this is the defence mechanism. Depending which way this goes, it.
Absolutely. And I would recommend that to any person that has concerns about whether a premises licence holder is upholding the licensing standards. Any person can make an application. And naturally, any complaints that are made to the licensing authority are thoroughly investigated as well.
I think it would have to come in with proof. Decibel levels.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need decibel levels, but I would suggest anyone with concerns, contact the environmental health team who have experience in submitting review applications and they can provide advice on how to suitably gather evidence if.
Thank you very much. Captain Green would like to ask a question. I'm, I'm just puzzled. All of a sudden, we've now got, after reading all these reports, not one of the 27 objections mentions anything about noise. But now you've just suddenly brought up noise. I just wondered.
There is noise within the, yeah, as in the person I'm representing, who is Jane Nicholson, she mentions noise and nuisance in, it's within ours as well. Definitely. As in, I think we've acknowledged that the usage today isn't representative of the licence they're applying for. We've had one example of it. That extreme, that's maybe another point.
Yeah, actually, I just see noise carries badly across the level meadow. Okay.
There's quite, thank you. No, there is.
Are you, are you, another point you want to make?
I just wanted to clarify because I think I wouldn't like to mislead you. The music is played inside the property in the pump house. So it's not external music they're playing. Reality is, so the volume it plays is relevant. Here outside, it's not a limitation.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for being that brief.
Okay, no, can I just bring one, two points from Jane Nicholson. Only because it's points you haven't heard before. So just, just make them very briefly for you. So she drew attention to the fact that the location of the pump house means there's very little police presence or any deterrents around there. So it's more out, it's not in the centre where there's more representation, more activity. So it's more on a limb, which I think is, is relevant. And she's also raised that as resident and close friends to residents, which is maybe to your point, sorry. which is maybe to your point, sorry, that the noise is already carrying into their property from the events that are already happening. That she's already experiencing increased noise due to living in, in, in the vicinity.
Where does she live?
Well, she lives actually in Badger Farm, but she has close friends in Barton's and in Plousenton Road. Plousenton Road is a road that represents it. So that's where she spends time. She has friends who live on Barton's. Okay, yes. Okay, which I think you'll find in the report in their own objections. Okay.
So that, I think, concludes. Not here to represent himself. So thank you very much. If you could turn your mic off. Bless you. That concludes the objections, I think, committee. Any questions? Would like to go first. We're going to kick it. Oh, I've got to have the brave step then. I have a real, having listened to the presentations. You get the impression that the area around the Pump House standard of iniquity with drug dealing, alcoholism, fighting. In your period of time of being there, you've seen any of this?
I haven't at all. I've been a resident of St Cross for 12 years. Well, so I am local to the area. I've just moved out. I've moved to Full Blood. But I've never known that. However, I did ask this thing if Reese knew of any of that. And he did confirm that apparently there has been thoughts that there's been some drug related activities in that sort of area. But actually, I think you were more saying it was Winall Moores rather than Cross. So I, you know, I haven't, no.
Another question I have for you. Alcohol appears to be being a major issue that people are facing about this application. You mentioned in your presentation that you police very strongly those that overinvolve. Do you, or this committee, please run through again slightly more detail how you plan on doing that? Because if people are driving off your premises, shall we say, inebriate that would be pretty shocking.
Yes.
So you're not running a pub, you're running a members' club. So how are you going to police that?
So we, as a policy, try to encourage all of the, all of the people that are members and non-members to make, sorry, make their way to the premises without driving anywhere, daytime, evening, whatever it is. We actually charge our members to park, which we've done that in order to reduce the amount of cars that come. Because by charging, that does do that. It really makes them think about whether they should be driving or not. You know, especially if they're, a lot of our members, I need to get this across as well, are local people. They are St Cross residents, quite a lot of them. You know, so most people from our member side walk. And similar thing to our cafe element and, you know, outside grounds or whatever. Again, a high number of them are walkers. From, with regards to but how do we police it? Now, in the summer months, when obviously it's lighter, we will have somebody outside. They're monitoring those grounds and, you know, if, if somebody's inebriated, then they won't be serving any more alcohol. You know, we will certainly keep watch of any potential where someone is looking to enter their car as well. Most pubs wouldn't necessarily have that facility to be able to actually have someone outside. But because we've got a decent outside area, we, we do have someone outside all day, every day. So, yeah.
My final question, if I may. Noise pollution, which can be classed as that. Your next door neighbours, obviously, felt fairly battered by a late night, not a, not a late night event, an evening event. But what or how would you take steps to turn down the level of noise inside the venue? So you're not labour through that.
So a couple of things I think is worth mentioning. We had, just to re-emphasise, we had a temporary event notice for the event that took place. We have the right to do that. But also what wasn't mentioned by the neighbour was that actually on the 12th of March, there was a birthday party with 80 people that attended. Like the bring your own concept, which there was loud music, of which there was drinking, which there was no mention of it at all. Which was interesting. But, or any complaints from anyone? So I think that's just worth mentioning. With regards to the noise, the, you know, I wasn't there for the event that took place. Reese was. Reese is the, the representative of the DPS that we're, we're going to be putting forward. He's, he's at site often. We, at nine o'clock in the evening on that particular event, closed on purpose the front door so that people could only go to the rear of the property. So again, to stop potential noise travelling across because we are conscious of that. We've also agreed, well, you know, this might slightly change, but we had agreed that we wouldn't, even though we've got permission to do so, have any seating to the front of the property to stop noise and any potential problems for the neighbour. So I think we've put a lot of things in place already. But actually, when those events are on, like I said, things like managing, you know, people going outside into the garden, well, maybe, you know, that's restricted after a certain time. Closing those front doors, closing windows. We have air con in, in, in the building, so we can obviously have that on instead of necessarily having wide doors, massive, massive doors wide open. So I think we're doing, we will be doing everything we can to do that.
That's awesome. Yes, just the one question. We asked the objectors about whether there's been any evidence. And the answer was no. Ask the same question of yourself. Have you had any incidents that you've observed?
No.
Probably not, right? Sure, Brian, you'll tell me if I'm wrong. It seems to me that some of the, some of the implications are that the drugs are coming from your place as well. You listen to it, you listen to.
I'm sure. I, I thought that too. I was a little shocked. But I, it might have just been wording rather than necessarily an accusation of drugs.
Yeah. I'm sure your members don't go into the meadows of the trouble.
Hopefully not.
All right, this concludes this part of the meeting. The next part is our deliberations. If I could ask, are we going to do it here? Yeah, so we're going to be staying in here. Sadly, we'll be asking you if you don't mind leaving the room for a little while when we have deliberated.
I can escort everyone to the chair to an allocated room or as explained in the notified of the outcome.
representations made by the responsible authorities and other persons, the applicant's evidence and the applicant's evidence given, taken into account the council's statement of public sector equality duty, the Home Office guidance issued under section 182 of the Licensing Act two three, duties under the Crime and Disorder Act 1990, rights set out in the Human Rights Act. The subcommittee has concluded that the application should be granted. Conditions set out, Libran?
Apologies. Or conditions, verbal conditions recommend section five of the report. Is it being granted?
Yes, it is. Right. The parties shall be formally notified of the decision in writing shortly. Notification will include details of the right to appeal against this decision. Magistrates' court must be made within two weeks. Committee? The committee has considered the promotion of four of the licensing objectives. Committee has considered the 182 obligations as I've just stated. Road issues are not for this committee to consider. We request signs saying please be considerate when leaving the premises be installed for everybody to read. We have looked at and considered strongly the conditions agreed within the police report on pages fourteen to sixteen inclusive and the licensing authority comment. We consider all this to be reasonable.